All to order the regular meeting of independent school district six ninety five. Lisa, can you do your call, please?
Director Ronasada?
Here.
Director Rice? Director Cardassina?
Here.
Director Laffey?
Here.
Director Raha?
Here.
Here, please.
Here. Uh, anybody from the public wishing to address? I've seen none. And we have no guests or visitors. But we do have a report by Mr. Rockley.
Okay. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. I'll try not to take up too much of your time. These songs out, which is rare. For so far this summer, so. Uh, the, I'm just gonna go over the couple of things that were provided to you. The first is a report that I had to give to the high school league on, um, unduplicated and duplicated athlete numbers. And so, um, you can see, I'm not gonna walk through everything here, um, with you. But you can see, if you just look at our grade levels, that we kind of have an opposite projection, boys and girls. Um, you know, you can see that the boys, you know, with the exception of the ninth grade class, which is our biggest class by twenty, um, our boys' numbers aren't flourishing. Uh, but the, the girls, especially in the younger, um, seventh, eighth, and ninth grades, we have great numbers, um, on the, on the female side. So, uh, we gotta make a push. Uh, we've known that based on football numbers of the past junior high, the past couple of seasons. Um, we've known that we have to make a push, um, for those, to get those boys active in, in sports and, you know, small schools, you ride the roller coaster, so just gotta, gotta ride the wave. But, uh, just wanted you to have that, to know that that report was submitted, um, to the high school league. And then I also use the same report in the fall, when I have to do my, um, Department of Education Title IX report that I give, or that I hand into them. Any questions on that?
Travis, so these numbers like football forty seven and basketball boys, uh, they're two best for all of these age groups.
Seven through twelve.
Seven through twelve, okay.
Yeah, yeah, seven through twelve.
Okay. And, and Mr. Rockley, what? Are coaches doing anything or the? I don't wanna use the word recruiting, but we have to recruit kids at a younger age. Are coaches involved in that? Are they doing any of that?
Yeah, um, we've, you know, we've made a push this year. I've, I've had a talk with, um, Brady and Nick and, um, Mr. Kravinsky and all, and, um, we've actually sent kids into the elementary and then, you know, to recruit, talk to them. We did that for baseball this year, which helped immensely, probably the reason we were able to have a junior high team. So I think we ended up with six sixth graders that played junior high baseball for us. So that was a saving grace. And then when they came over for orientation for seventh grader, or a walkthrough, I guess I shouldn't say orientation, their, their walkthrough that they do, they stopped in my room and I talked to them and I had them fill out a sheet. What are you interested in? You know, what kind of sports do you plan to play? And so, um, based off of that, I, I'm hopeful that we'll get a decent amount of seventh graders that come out for sports. Um, but yeah, it, it, coaches have to do that. It's gotta be part of their program. When they take a program on, that's your program, K-12.
I agree.
And so, you gotta get here, you gotta get your face known to the kids, whether it's through a camp, whether it's through a fun day, but the, you know, whatever it might be, you need to, so the kids can visually know who you are. I think that helps a lot.
Do we do anything for the sixth graders so that they know? Because, I'll be honest, I didn't know my kids could join track in sixth grade. So...
Well, we did this year.
Yeah, right, right.
Prior to this year, I don't know that, that that's happened.
So I mean, maybe getting, let's sports, they can, starting the school year, the summer packet, because sports start in August in the fall. So if there's anything that those sixth graders may be getting a letter.
Swimming was always early, younger grades would start swimming.
Yeah, fourth grade, it can actually...
Fourth graders started swimming. I remember when I was in school.
But maybe sending a notice, a summer letter, letting them know captain's practice or, you know, just communicating, because not all parents have apps, not all kids have Snapchat.
Right.
So...
Yeah, no, I can do that. That's a good idea. No problem.
Because otherwise, a lot of kids too feel like, I signed up late, I can't join.
Right.
We think they have to wait to join.
It's children in seventh grade where it could be swimming from fourth grade on.
Well, track is sixth grade.
Yep, which is...
Track is sixth grade.
Yep.
But even like sometimes missing that deadline to sign up. I mean, Travis has let, I know two, sign up late for track and they got right into it. I mean, we just didn't know.
Yeah, it's, it's much easier at the junior high level than it is at a, you know, a junior game. It's halfway through the season and said, well, now I wanna join. Uh, that might be a little, little different discussion, but, but yeah, I mean, especially for the junior high kids. And honestly, in the spring, I let them play too, if they, if they're junior high and they really wanna try both. I let them, because why not? You know?
Like one.
So, um, it, it, there's only a select few that, that have any interest in doing like baseball track or softball track, but let them figure it out, I guess, right?
Travis, do you know of any school district that makes it a requirement to participate in at least one activity? And it doesn't have to be a sport, it could be robotics or drama or, and do you know of any districts that do that or, or even if you can do that?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know. Um, I, I sure wish we could.
There's a lot of things.
Yeah. Um, we have a lot of kids in our building that unfortunately aren't active, so I, I just, any, anytime I see someone who's not, I try to have a conversation with them, what do you do, you know, in the classroom? But yeah, I don't know of any school that doesn't make that a requirement, except for maybe like for a homecoming type of thing, you know?
Right.
Or something like that.
So one of these fees that you're proposing here, should it have any issues with collecting those fees like last year or year before?
Um, not, not a ton since I've been here.
Okay.
Um, it, most parents have been really responsive and, I mean, we have, and I, Mary Jo just made envelopes for me, so we're gonna send out some, some bills for people that didn't pay for this year, but, I mean, that's pretty minimal.
Okay.
Um, but if you do switch to the fee schedule, um, you will see, uh, see what the, what kind of proposal that I came up with. And I will tell you, uh, this form is almost identical to HIBINGS. Um, Keith and I talked a lot, um, regarding how they handle their fees. And, um, I, I like it. And so, um, you can see the increase, um, even with that increase, we're still thirty dollars below HIBING. Um, we're below rapid or below quite a few schools even with this increase. So, um, talking with, um, Chair Casey and Mr. Morrison, we felt that, I felt comfortable bringing it to you guys. Uh, I don't know when the last time that fees were raised. I, I couldn't tell you that, maybe you might know.
They were hundred and seventy, that's what they are, one hundred and seventy for the two different age groups.
Ninety and seventy, right?
Ninety and seventy, yeah, it's been ninety and seventy since I was here a little bit years ago.
Yeah.
The only difference was we charged a full fee for being reduced. We know there was no break that, which, I believe the board changed, I don't wanna say it, two years ago.
Yeah. So I mean, as you go through, you can, I, I marked where there would be an increase. Um, the family cap went up. The ones, the one thing that, and again, this isn't for your action tonight, um, obviously, but, um, the one thing that I did add is bowling and skating. Um, we have not, prior to me getting here, we have not charged for those activities, however, they are allowed to letter. And so, this is exactly what HIBING does, is they, they letter them, but they charge them to letter. So that's where that came from. Um, I've had feedback from coaches that they're not happy that, um, they can letter because they don't pay a fee. And, um, so again, um, that's, that's the, the, uh, leaving behind that.
If you don't mind if I add that.
Oh, fine.
And I know over the years when I was athletic director, there was probably I'd get one or two groups a year that would say, hey, can we letter for this? So I think we need to be really careful. I don't know if you've been approached, but without naming what group, it doesn't matter, it just, it's kinda like, I always want to put a stop to that, because we gotta be careful, these are not necessarily, I don't wanna get rid of any, but I, I also wanna be careful that we don't start, uh, lettering everybody for everything. It's when they're not necessarily school-sponsored activities. But we, you know, I don't wanna go backwards either, but anything with figure skating and bowling. But I don't know if you've been approached by anybody, but, um...
No, uh, the only one that struck me was J.O. volleyball. And that's because they're a club and skating and bowling are a club. And so, that's the only one that I've had a conversation with. And my answer to that was flat, no. I can't let them volleyball.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and, um, you know, those letters, they, they count, or when we choose athlete of the year. And so, you know, they matter, um, which they should matter. So that's, um, where that's at. Now, regarding the certified free or reduced, um, the way it's presented here is that whether you were free or whether you were reduced, you would pay this fee. That's the way it's set up, um, in HIBING. I actually happen to like that way. However, on the backside of this sheet is the passage, is the minutes of what was passed a couple of years ago, which says that if you are, if you qualify free, then you're, you don't pay any cost. So, again, whatever, whatever way you decide to go on that, um, I'm fine with. But, um, in order to change it to what my preference would be, you would have to act on that.
It would just be both of them would be half.
Yeah, both of them be half. And that way at least we don't put myself on everything's to check.
Yeah.
And then the last thing that I'll mention is, this is part of, part of the reason behind this is why I do the Go Scramble. Um, I want us to really start to push the fact that there is funds if you need financial help and all you had to do is reach out. You know, um, there's a simple half sheet that you have to fill out and your fee's covered. I mean, I don't ask questions, it's not my place to ask questions. If you come to me and you say that you need financial help, we will help you. So that's kind of what the trend that I would like to set going forward. Um, but again, whatever you guys decide, I'm, I'm okay doing.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll get this on a upcoming agenda.
Yeah, um, whenever you need in July, so I can have it ready for when August hits.
Sure.
So, that'd be my biggest, and that's the only thing. Pam and I have everything ready to go, we're just waiting on the fees.
Any questions for Mr. Rockley? Thank you, guys.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks.
Moving on to item five, approving the agenda. Uh, before I ask for a motion, I would like to add one item, that is the donation of the, um, equipment that we had out here in the park. So I'd like to add that to the agenda.
Where are you adding this?
I would add it under, uh, eight, eight P, and then we would move eight Q. We would move the current, eight P to Q.
To Q, and then add P, okay.
So I would like to entertain that, that motion.
Make the motion.
Motion by Director Laffey, supported by Director Raha.
I have one question before we move forward. Looking at what we need to sign after the meeting, did I miss this on the agenda?
No, that's already been approved. It was a mistake on his salary. I had to clarify that.
Okay, so we have the order.
It's on his hire.
Okay, yeah. Okay, just making sure. Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, approving the consent agenda. These are the minutes of the June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four regular meeting.
All motion.
Motion by Director Raha, supported by Director Ronasada. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, personnel. Item A, motion to accept the resignation of Darlin Hanson, paraprofessional, Chisholm Elementary, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Make the motion.
Motion by Director Laffey.
I'll support.
Support by Director Cardassina. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, motion to accept the resignation of Donald Quirk as the Level One Softball Coach, effective June fifth, twenty twenty four.
All motion.
Motion by Director Raha.
So, yeah.
Show that.
Okay. Support by Director Laffey. Any discussion?
Just case, yes, many years.
All those in favor, signal five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, motion to approve the land exchange agreement between the City of Chisholm and Minnesota Municipal Corporation and Independent School District number six ninety five, Chisholm Public Schools, as presented. You have, for you, a map of the parcel that the school district would be taking over. And we would be transferring the park to south of the police station, correct?
Yep, that and two other parcels, the Lincoln...
Two other parcels, yeah. The Lincoln Park.
The Lincoln Park, and then there's a little weird chunk down by the...
A little weird chunk by the, by the lake.
Oh.
I think we're, I think we're...
Yeah, but there's a little city road poster. I will make the motion.
I will support it. Motion by Director Ronasada.
My time coming.
Uh, support by Director Raha. Any discussion? I would like to say one, one thing. Um, I believe that we are acquiring a piece of property that is beneficial to us as a school district, however, at the same time, I think we're acquiring a piece of property that is a detriment to us. And that's all, say, with that.
Or Chair, can I just add one thing? Um, when you approve it, can you approve it pending the insurance claim that it has? Because right now, the lights, any bulbs that are out on any of the lights are being, um, claimed under, because it's still under the city's insurance. So the city has a claim right now out and all of the lights are included in that. So if there's burnt bulbs, those should be replaced.
Prior to, prior to the transfer?
Correct.
Jackie, wouldn't we, in those situations, when you do a land swap like that, and, not a land swap, basically this is a land sale without money, don't, between, wouldn't, if they've made an insurance claim prior to, that would still have to be done?
It would, I don't want to think, well, their insurance claim, right.
They'd do the insurance claim, I can still close on the house contingent on that work being completed. So couldn't we add a contingency that the land swap, we improve it contingent on...
I think that's what Travis was saying.
The, the lights are...
Just contingent based on, on current...
On the current claims that like can, they can finish that.
I don't want you guys to have to do a bill for, like, the light's being out.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I, I confirm that.
Amendment?
I will make that amendment contingent on the insurance claim being completed prior to the full land swap.
All agree to that, yeah. Amendment is motion by Director Ronasada, supported by Director Raha. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item eight, administrative business, oh, no, B, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the food service management contract with INAC Incorporated from July first, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, as presented.
I mean...
Motion by Director Laffey.
Support.
Support by Director Cardassina. Any discussion?
Yeah, I talked to Alex real quick and it sounded three percent increases within reason. We've had, I've been here, as long as I've been here, it's, INAC's been pretty solid, that things run pretty smoothly and never had any major issues, um, since we've just done here, so.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item C, motion to approve the payment of, I hope I'm saying this right, Sabas in the amount of forty seven thousand and eighty-eight dollars to purchase reading curriculum using approved S R three learning loss funds.
So, yeah.
Support. Motion by Director Laffey, support by Director Raha. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is just reading curriculum, Mrs. Albert, Mrs. Warner, Mrs. Allen, I've been working on it for quite a long time. Um, they need to get this approved, um, to get that quote by the end of the month, so we gotta work it, so. But anyway, this is, it's all extra funds, we're using up that last chunk, I think all of it, ten thousand of it, we've got, so it's a big chunk of money, but it's, it's all extra funds, so. I could say it was, it's limited uses, extra funds, so we have to basically address learning also.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, motion to approve payment to McGraw Hill in the amount of a hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-three cents to purchase reading curriculum using approved S R three learning loss funds.
All motion.
Motion by Director Raha, support by Director Laffey. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four revised budget as presented. I think we'll have, uh, Mr. Kazar?
Yes.
Number two, Mr. Kazar, number two.
Yep. Well, apologize for some of the typo on yours and all, on the board packet, but you should all have the FY twenty-four revised budget. Uh, but just kind of overall summary, it's a little bit better than what was originally adopted last spring, uh, with the deficit decreasing to five hundred and twenty-six thousand from six hundred and seventy-four thousand. Uh, mainly the, this is a result of additional legislative funding, um, and a relatively stable enrollment that we've seen. Uh, Fund One, our main operating budget, showing a deficit of seventy-one thousand. Uh, this is decreased from what was originally adopted based on, um, more special ed and compensatory funding, um, as well as some other smaller areas such as paraprofessional and library. Fund Two, our food service, uh, INAC does a really good job of managing that budget, so we're looking at a small surplus of four thousand there. Uh, Fund Three, transportation, the deficit showing at a hundred and four thousand. Uh, that's a result of increased costs with special education, transportation, and increased fuel costs. Uh, Fund Five, capital, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar deficit there. Uh, there's some additional costs for building improvements, uh, one of the big ones is work with on a new heating system improvement. Uh, but kind of our intention with this is that the hundred and eighty-five thousand deficit would be conservative overall. Um, Six, construction, so the expenditures of almost twelve million there is based on the draw schedule that we originally had. Um, but should note that all the funds were actually received in FY twenty-three for this, but for the sake of keeping this clean, we just kinda matched the revenue and expense on this one. Uh, Seven, the debt, debt reduction, uh, so this revenue is collected based on our upcoming debt schedules. And then the trust, extracurricular, and scholarship, those are all revenue in, revenue out, so we anticipate those to be at or near balanced. Uh, Forty-five, the OPEB trust, uh, with revenue of a hundred and fifty thousand on the, uh, estimated interest on the outstanding bonds and the expenditures of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, uh, is what was approved for paying retiree benefits. And then Fund Forty-seven, the debt service on the, um, OPEB bonds. But open it up for any questions or discussion.
No, I've got one here. Because every, every year I bring this up and I, drives me crazy. OPEB is to be used for retiree health benefits, correct? Now, what if our retiree health benefits are higher than two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars? We can draw off of that interest to pay that? Am I right?
Yes, we can draw out of that trust for retiree health insurance until we know...
Every year.
Until we know, you do. The two hundred and ninety-one thousand was approximate cost of last year's retirement premiums.
But we can fill in a general fund with whatever it is.
Yep. Yep, and that goes back to the discussion about whether we should even be levying at all when we have the six million dollars in the trust, so.
Good point. Okay, thank you.
And you're, you're lawyer foreseeing no additions to that expenditure? Do we have anybody within range on that?
Within what? Well, the only, the only things that I would see increase is if we have new kids that bring in new needs, that like pairs, that, that's the thing that happens in August to early September a lot of times. You get a kid that has a, yeah, they transfer in, they have one-on-ones, and then that's a pair that we have down here, things like that. Um, some of the stuff that we're adding is gonna be covered by new funding, like the school nurse, the school licensed nurse. She has, Ms. Roche Norris has received her license, so forty per, forty thousand of her salary would be covered. So we're probably, I would say with the two, we got an LPN and then we'll have a school licensed nurse, we're probably equal to what we were doing prior with, um, forget the name of company.
Recovery help.
Huh?
Recovery help.
Recovery help, yeah, we're probably about the same, give or take, but now we're adding medical classes for our kids based on our license. Um, this new position that we are posted for right now will be covered by leftover title money, because Sarah Bates was half time now, or point four, and so we still have title money to cover her. And we're also getting that forty thousand dollars in front of the state legislature. So things like that we're adding, but we're also finding ways to pay for it that aren't coming on our general fund, so we're adding. Anyway, so a lot of, there's, there's new things happening, but anything new is covered by either grants or, um, special funding we're giving to the state at this point, so anyway. I could keep wrapping it around.
Wrap it around the model.
But it's, but it's all a wash.
Basically, the funding is free.
We're not making any cuts, we're not. The only additions would be, if we decide that, like, we added two coaches this year based on numbers, that's a positive thing, we want that. Um, or pair of positions that you just have needs, or anything else I'm foreseeing that I can't till the future, but typically it's pairs and kids that come in and we have to, you know, no choice.
And Noah, in your, your brief tenure here, and I, I'd be forced to, looking over to Mr. Kazar, number one.
I'm number two, you're number three.
Clear that up a little while.
Uh, how does the City of Chisholm look compared to other?
City of Chisholm?
School district, our school district look compared to other school districts?
Yeah, we were, uh, we're working on this now, as you can now, if you see, but compared to other school districts in the area, a lot stronger financial position, just with some of the reserves that are available.
We're in a financial stronger position.
Yes.
Yeah, there's several districts that are, there's, there's a formula that helps you calculate how far away you are from...
There's, there's a formula that helps you calculate how far away you are from S O D basically. There's some districts that are in the low single digit percents and Chisholm's like, yeah, something.
Yeah.
And after the board cruise that we're gonna take now.
Well, I think that's good to hear. It, it shows the voting public that this board and its staff. Is doing this job. Trying to provide a decent education and keep costs in line. With that said, uh.
Excellent.
Very good.
Can I already ask for a motion? Do I ask?
No.
Okay, I'll ask for it.
I will make the motion to accept the revised budget.
Motion by Director Raha.
I'll support.
Support by Director Karri Simon. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items F through O. Our policy changes and, um. I'll, I'll go through each, each one individually, but, um, Director Lappi, you were on the policy board.
Yes.
And most of these revisions were of.
Yeah, there's a couple of minor things that, um, Cindy and I had talked. Have to go reviewing them.
Amendments, changes.
Yeah. A lot of the M S B A.
Okay. I'll go through these, uh, motion, uh, policy number five eleven, student fundraising. Policy five twelve, school sponsored student publications and activities. Policy five seventeen, student disability non discrimination. Policy five eighteen, do not resuscitate, do not intubate orders. Policy five nineteen, interviews of students by outside agencies. Policy five twenty, student surveys. Policy five twenty three, policies incorporated by reference. Policy five twenty five, violence prevention, a playbook to students and staff. And policy five twenty seven, student use in parking of motor vehicles, patrols and inspections and searches. And lastly, policy five twenty eight, student parental, family and marital nondiscrimination. Can I get a motion to approve these revisions?
And so many.
Motion by Director Lappi.
Support.
Oh, yeah, Sabas, right.
Support. Support by Director Raha. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item P, this was an addition, donation of equipment, used equipment to Balkan Township. Oh, Mike, Mike left. So. Uh, as the story goes, Mr. Morrison has, uh, pretty good knowledge that the resale value of the equipment was next to nothing.
You're talking about the one that was on.
Yeah, the one that was right across the street. Um, Mr. Frieden did call around, see if the city wanted it. The city didn't want it. Uh, however, Balkan Township has expressed an interest in it and would like it and I think.
It's newer than theirs.
I mean?
It's newer than theirs.
It's newer than theirs. So, and I think it's in, uh, just for business sense to donate that equipment to. So I entertain a motion for that.
All motion approval.
Support.
Motion by Director Raha, support by Director Lappi. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, item Q is a motion to recess the regular meeting. Go into a closed session to discuss superintendent's evaluation. And again, this is a recess. Leaving a motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion, sorry.
Motion by Director Karri Simon.
I'll support.
Support by Director Ron DeSarder. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Morrison. Uh, it is your choice whether to have the meeting closed or.
We can close it.
Time is five thirty eight.